I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeiss symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. I would like to acknowledge members of the town administration that are here tonight. We have our manager, Alex Brown, Assistant Town Manager and Community Development Director, Jackie Olaya, our Town Clerk, Alfred Sadio, our Business Operations Manager, Randy Hernandez, our Attorney, Charles Credit. Representing the Police Department tonight will be Officer Howdy. We also have members of the Code Enforcement Office with us, Officer Tony and Officer Hernandez. We would also like to welcome all of you here tonight. We especially welcome members of the press that will be here. Next on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Any changes? No changes. Next is ceremonies, and there are none. Next is proclamations, and there are none. Next is council comments. Going first tonight will be Councilor Cono.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. First of all, I attended the No Kings Rally and Protest, was it last weekend? Last weekend. And I just want to thank the Silver City Police Department. I've, in the past, been critical of the way the Police Department handles public events because sometimes, you know, there's a little group of three and then the public can't really interact. But the officers who were at the No Kings Rally did an excellent job. I saw them talking to people, smiling, not walking together, you know, spread out, and it was really great. So I hope that kind of coverage of events continues because it was nice to see members of the community talking to the police officers and actually, you know, joking and laughing and stuff. It was really nice. And the other thing, I just want to remind people, Friday is Halloween, so all of our Little List residents are going to be running the street, not realizing that they shouldn't do that. So if you're driving on Friday, be extra careful. Just, you know, keep our pedestrians safe. Thank you.
Next is Councilor Ben Coma.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much to say. I would like to thank the representative from Amber Care that made a presentation to the seniors at the Senior Center. She covered a lot of the services that they provide, which is basically hospice care. She provided, you know, pamphlet that most commonly ask questions and answers. I could tell you that a lot of seniors there spent some time with her and were discussing a lot of stuff there. I personally spent some time with them because we got a family members not doing well. But I want to thank them for sending them to give that presentation, and that's pretty much all I have. One more thing, I've noticed that there's a lot of fire hards that have been painted, and some people were asking me what's that all about. Fire department typically, they're required to test hydrants once a year, and they're testing to see how efficient the water that they, that's coming out of that hydrant. So you may see, right now, they're painted yellow, but you'll probably see them come over and start painting the bonnets. They're color-coded based on the number of gallons per minute that that hydrant puts out. Anyway, I just, it's nice to see nicely painted stuff around town, even if it's a hydrant, if it's a curb, sidewalks, anything. So anything that, anytime you see something like that. For me personally, I enjoy seeing stuff that is repainted and is looking good. It makes the town look nice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of great improvements have come to District Three. The first I noticed when I was walking down Sixth Street to downtown at Texas, looking towards Seventh Street, is a very colorful mural on the back of the Hub building. It was done by an artist named Damian and sponsored by Chris Hill, owner of the Hub. If you're down that way, check it out. Thank you, Damian, and others who worked on this colorful mural. The second improvement was a collaboration between the neighborhood community led by Janie Katz and the town. This is Noble Park on F Street and Market. A new playground equipment has been installed, and with a few finishing touches, the project will be complete. A big thank you to the neighborhood community and the town for this accomplishment. Also, would like to encourage everyone to get out and vote. A week from today is Election Day.
Next is Councilor Prince.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, this past Saturday, I had the awesome experience of being able to take a nice hike down from the Virginia Street Park and make it all the way down to all of the new improvements over at the Big Ditch Park. The new core grid installation came through wonderfully, and seeing the next phase of our trail system start to come together. It was a really beautiful fall day, and I would not say it's 100% accessible yet. We're working towards that, but it's a wonderful time to be able to start to get out and see how things are looking through our trail systems. The big one that we've got coming up is going to be what is going to be happening in our communities for SNAP and food distribution. I think a lot of folks are starting to see some of the numbers, is that 21% of New Mexico's population might not see SNAP and EBT benefits deposit between Friday night and Saturday morning. And that's going to be a challenge, just because I know a lot of offices are going to be closed. I believe tomorrow afternoon, there's going to be a presentation from the Governor of New Mexico. I would encourage folks to do the social thing, watch the news, and do what you can to help to communicate over what's going to be changing and what our systems of support are going to look like. If it was going to be 21% of Grant County, we would be looking at somewhere around about 7,000 people who would not be seeing their food deposits. So that's quite a lot, and I just want to make sure that instead of panicking, the best thing to do is to plan and communicate. If anybody has any questions or concerns, let's wait to see tomorrow's press briefings and just take it day by day until then. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting on October 14, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Snyder?
I move to approve the regular meetings of minutes for the regular meeting on October 14, 2025.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Prince?
Second the motion is stated.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is, oh, and I should also want to make a comment real quick. The voting officials handed me this little note about an hour ago. As of that time, 1,194 people had voted early. Okay, next on the agenda is public input. Now, I'm going to rearrange the sign-in sheet a little bit so I can keep some topics together. First of all, I'm going to recognize Mr. Jeff Gordon, who will talk on homelessness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, can, is this, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, my name is Jeff Goan, citizen of Silver City. And it is my personal philosophy that all of the difficulties that individuals and communities experience result from disconnection, feeling disconnected. Disconnection gives rise to apathy and ignorance and indifference, and I think that's especially relevant with regard to our unhoused community in Silver City. It has been my observation that a sort of us and them mentality has developed, a disconnect and indeed, as a result, apathy and indifference toward the unhoused in our community. These are members of our community, just as important as any other community. I think that their needs must be addressed. I would appeal to you to consider their needs and address them. I was told recently by some friends of mine who are knowledgeable about the issue of homelessness, who said that our friends in Las Cruces have a very progressive approach to the homeless situation, multi-tiered, various levels of support, very progressive, very dynamic. And I was further informed that Las Cruces municipality helps fund this homelessness issue and helping the unhoused become housed. I was saddened and disappointed to hear that our own Silver City does not provide similar funding for the unhoused of our community, and I hope that, I hope that that will change very soon. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Next, speaking on coal rolling is John McMurray.
My name is John McMurray and has been for a good many years now. This past Friday afternoon, I was part of the group at Watts Hall, Swan Street and Silver Heights Boulevard. We were holding flags showing our disapproval of the Trump administration's actions and policies. We were also part of the group at Saturday's No Kings Rally. As expected, many of the passing drivers ignored us, many honked and waved, a few waved only their middle finger, but that's all normal and expected. What I didn't expect was a few drivers pulling the stunt known as rolling coal. Most of you good people have heard of the practice, I'm sure. Some diesel pickup drivers, not the big rig drivers, use it to blast out clouds of poisonous black diesel fumes, usually aimed at people they don't like, for whatever reason they don't like them. I forwarded these concerns in some video to Chief Portillo, who's been most helpful. The question here, it seems like, what's the point? If you don't care for our views, just keep driving. Flip us off if it makes you feel better. Even better, stop by and talk with us. We're reasonable folks. Share your ideas and concerns. Maybe we can work together a little bit to make our community better. And as a parting thought, kindly don't patronize by telling me that's what diesels do. I'm a pretty good mechanic, and I worked on diesels when my dad had his truck business. Behavior like this is just malicious. The folks doing these stunts are your friends, your relatives, maybe you. Enough with the nonsense. You all know better. Behave yourselves. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Gordon West, who will be speaking on the land use code.
Hi, thanks for giving me a couple of minutes. I'm a local resident, and I've recently started a building project doing a combination garage and a solar energy structure, and it's in a historic district. As I was going through the historic district design review process, I learned that with the current land use code, there was going to be some issues that probably were going to require a application for a variance, which would be a very long time. I don't know if you guys know, but the federal subsidy for solar energy projects is evaporating on December 31st. And I was told that there was a new land use code amendment in process, and was given a copy. And I just want to say, after having spent hours reviewing the old one and wondering just why some of those things were in there, that the new one is just fantastic. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the effort that's gone into this over the last year. I would like to say I hope that the approval of it is expedited so that it helps my project out. But in any case, I really appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Simon Wheaton Smith on land use code.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Simon Wheaton Smith. I'm Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The reason I'm here right now is you do have before you a whole collection of documents. It would be preferable that they will be collated in sequence, but the most recent document, there is a typographical error that I think needs to be corrected. When we discussed the last meeting with the consultant, I made it very clear what language we wanted to define a majority and that it should come from Robert's Rules, specifically Section 44:1, which uses the term "more than half." For some reason, the consultant put in "more than 50%." And while mathematically that may appear to be the same, it is really not, and it creates a lot of other problems elsewhere. And Robert's Rules instructors, every single one of them, will tell you never to use a percentage when you're defining a majority. There are certain exceptions, of course, when you get into the supermajority. So I just wanted to alert you to the fact that the most recent change, the very first item, does define majority, and it says, these are the wrong glasses, of course, "more than 50% of the votes cast," not including blah, blah, blah. And that should be "more than half of the votes cast," so that's a typographical error. And I did ask the consultant to correct it, and as far as I know, he did not. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. One of the action items tonight will be relative to the land use code. That's actually going to be under New Business Agenda Item B. And as we address this, we want to get community input on this particular topic. So the council would like to get this input during public input. So we're going to allow people to come up to discuss the land use amendment proposal. We're going to allow three minutes per speaker, and when you come up, please speak directly into the microphone and give us your name, please. So whoever wants to come up, come on up, okay?
Hello, my name is Robin Kopit, and I own four properties in Silver City, and I will be moving here in January. I had a long talk with Jackie about two months ago, because one of the properties has a small house on it, but I would like to build three more small houses on it. It's three blocks from the university, and I think it's the right project for the property. I hired an architect, and he told me that he had a long meeting with Jackie and that we would need to put eight parking places on that property if we were going to build four houses, if we were going to build three houses in addition to the one that was there. It's a sloping lot with concrete retaining walls. It would add $150,000 to put eight parking places on that lot, and it would really change the nature of the lot. It would be partly a parking lot. And I wouldn't do the project if that was the criteria, because it would be too expensive and miss the point. The point is to make houses that don't cost a lot to build so that they don't cost a lot to live in. And six weeks later, Jackie called me up, and she told me about these changes to the building code, and I'm here tonight. I just arrived today, but I'm here tonight because I want to encourage you to adopt those changes. And specifically, I'll build those three houses if you adopt those changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on in the agenda to item number eight, reports. First will be a report of the Southwest New Mexico Community Forest Management Plan by Allison Civic and Company.
And Company, that's right. Good evening. I'm Allison Civic, Executive Director of Healer Resources Information Project, and I'm also the Project Director of the Southwest New Mexico Community Forestry Network. And with me tonight are Mari Val Medel and Eric Geier. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
Hi, everyone. Mari Val Medel. I work for Western New Mexico University. We are the fiscal agent for the grant.
Hey, everyone. Nice to be here this evening. Thank you. My name is Eric Geier. I'm the Assistant Director on this grant, but also a tree care professional, and so happy to be here and be part of this community. Just thank you.
Great, thanks. So thank you for the invitation to be here tonight to talk to you about two things, the draft Silver City Community Forest Management Plan, and also we'll give you a very quick update on some of our tree planting and tree care activities over the last six months or so. So it's been a year since we've been here to talk to you about the Community Forest Management Plan and the project itself. Just a quick, quick recap. The Southwest New Mexico Community Forest Network Project is a five-year project funded by the U.S. Department of Agriculture to grow and care for the urban forests in six communities, so Silver City, Santa Clara, Baird, Hurley, Demming, and Lordsburg. And we are interested in expanding the benefits of trees to everyone in each of these six municipalities, and we're focusing on things like reducing urban heat by providing shade to the hottest areas of town, providing trees where people are recreating in parks, and along walking corridors connecting neighborhoods to parks and other town facilities, just to give you kind of a flavor of the things that we're looking at. And so for the past year, since we met last, we've engaged community members and town staff on community forestry issues. A big thank you to Jackie Olaya and also to Jesus Avilad from the Parks Department. So we've been working very closely with them to assess tree care and maintenance issues, where we need to remove dead trees and replace them, where we need to carry out safety pruning, where are the opportunities for new trees. We've looked at irrigation system needs and even green stormwater infrastructure possibilities. So all of these things have come together along with data and other inputs and assessments into this draft Community Forest Management Plan. And the purpose of the plan really is to guide concrete actions to achieve a vision for a healthy community forest in the town of Silver City. So you all have in your packets the full plan, I believe. Alfred copied it for you. I know it's pretty long, but, and also you have the executive summary, and Mari Val passed out the executive summary to some folks in the, in the audience, so you've got that. But everything is on our website, SWNNForestry.org. And so, let's see, we're just going to kind of walk through kind of these main strategies. In Silver City, Silver City's community forest is very complicated, so the Silver City Plan looks very different than what we've got in some of the other communities. So we've really organized the plans, goals, strategies, and actions into five stewardship areas. So we're focused on residential neighborhoods, arts, culture, tourism, community services, and athletic facilities, urban corridors, and then also natural landscapes and open But the first goal is kind of a cross-cutting goal. It goes across all, all five of those stewardship areas. So the first goal being that Silver City collaboratively manages a resilient community forest that contributes to broader community goals. So obviously, care and growth of the community forest is going to be a community-wide and collaborative process. So we want to be doing things like working with not only municipal staff, but also state forestry, federal folks, county people, Western and other community members, like nonprofits. We want to be training people. We need to be monitoring the community forest for health and tree maintenance needs. So this is really kind of a broad, cross-cutting goal. Goal two really focuses on residential neighborhoods and really expanding and revitalizing parks and elementary school landscapes and in neighborhoods with the highest need. So we've done some of the analysis to kind of look at where those priority areas are, and we'll get to that here in a, in a couple minutes. Looking at street trees to connect people to parks and other areas, town facilities, and really engaging community members in taking care of the community forest. Goal three, we've got a lot of legacy trees in our parks, in our riparian corridors. We need to be thinking about succession. So Goff Park, for instance, let's just take that as an example. We've got a lot of beautiful legacy trees in Goff Park, very large trees. But we need to be thinking about succession planting. How do we plant new trees now so when these older trees die, we have other trees coming up? So we, we really need to be thinking about that, not only in parks, but also other historic landscapes, so facilities. Big Ditch Park is another, obviously, center of our downtown, and we've got a lot of legacy tree issues and tree maintenance issues in Big Ditch Park. Goal four, focused on community services and athletic facilities, enhancing the community forest, enhancing public health and quality of life for residents and visitors. So other parks and pedestrian walkways, bus stops, parking lots, a lot of these places are also really high, sources of high urban heat. And so as we get hotter and drier, we need to have trees for shade so that we can mitigate that urban heat island effect. Goal five focuses on urban corridors. We want to be looking at more cohesive street, street trees, so street scaping on Highway 180 and Highway, Highway 90 to create attractive business districts. We want to proactively integrate tree infrastructure and irrigation into these new and expanding residential developments along streets and parks and in other public spaces. And then finally, goal six, and this is one that's unique really to Silver City, for natural landscapes and open spaces, because we have these amazing, beautiful, open spaces, riparian corridors running through the middle of downtown, and they require a lot of maintenance. And so we need to be thinking about wildfire risks, need to be thinking about, you know, how we're monitoring and maintaining that riparian forest over the long term. So the action plan comes out of these strategies and, or these goals and strategies, and so you can refer to the plan for all the nitty-gritty details. And like I said, this really is a roadmap, really. It's a to-do list for the future, for the next five years of what we need to be doing to grow and care for the community forest. These couple maps here just give you a sense of the priority areas. This first one just shows more kind of on the west side of Hudson Street, Highway 90. So not a surprise, key priority areas, Goff Park, Penny Park, the skate park, our historic downtown district, the visitor's center. We've got Little Walnut Road here because as, we also, I should have mentioned that we also met with the fire department, so we really wanted to incorporate their input in terms of fire prevention and wildfire protection. And so the Little Walnut area within the city limits is identified by them as an area for, in the wildland urban interfaces, as being a priority. as being a priority. The second map is kind of more focused on the west side of Hudson Street. So we've got the new rec center and that 32nd Street area up by the rec center, the high school, all those recreation facilities, the 32nd Street bypass, Big Ditch Park, Brewer Hill, and then finally Harrison Schmidt area. And now to just give you, this is kind of the fun stuff. These are the visualizations. Our contractor that put this plan together, and I neglected to mention them, Sarah Hurtow from Integrated Biological Solutions. Her and her team have put this plan together for us. They've also hired Anthropopulos, Amy Bell, who's done a lot of work for the town. We have six renderings of three different locations. So the first one is the Visitor Center. We've already done some work at the Visitor Center. We removed a lot of the dead and dying trees, the black locusts from the front of the Visitor Center. This is kind of reimagining what the Visitor Center could look like with new shade trees and understory plantings. So we removed black locusts in this little area at the south end of the Visitor Center. So this is like a beautiful Texas red bud. And here's kind of the front of the Visitor Center on Hudson Street as you're driving south on Hudson, gonna round the bend there, with some new tree planting and understory plantings. This is Penny Park. There's no grass at Penny Park right now. So this kind of envisions, this was Jesus's idea, wanting a little grassy area in Penny Park. This is the west side of the park. For those of you that remember, there was a little memorial garden to Janet Hammel of Toy Town. So this is kind of revitalizing that space with shade trees and grass. So this is looking west, kind of by the restrooms. And then here's from the parking lot. So this is that west, the parking lot, kind of the Skate Park parking lot on the west side of Penny Park, looking into the park. So you can see more shade trees, more understory plantings. And the third location for the visualization is La Capia Chapel. This is the reimagined entrance to La Capia from La Capia Street. So looking to the south and looking up towards the chapel. And then this is kind of more formalizing the parking lot there at La Capia with more plantings and kind of rockwork. Also, the road right now is eroding away. So we'd be doing some green stormwater infrastructure to direct stormwater flow into tree plantings and prevent erosion from happening on the dirt road. Anyway, that gives you a bit of a flavor of what we're talking about for some of these public spaces. So the plan is open for public review for 30 days through November 23rd, so right before Thanksgiving, because our goal is to get you all a final plan for your approval at, I believe, the December 9th Town Council meeting, which I think is the last meeting of the year for you all. So that's our, that's our plan, is to get it finished up. So we'd love to have your, have your input on the plan by November 23rd. So there's also a public comment form on the website. So it's just a Google form, so to make it easy for people to submit their public comment. That's on the website as well. I have one last slide, just some very, very quick updates, and then I can stand for any questions here. We, I did mention we've done, looked at tree care and maintenance needs across town parks and spaces. And so we've got a very long laundry list of tree care needs. We're working collaboratively with Jackie and Jesus, Southwest Tree Solutions, Joey Franklin Owens. We have him under contract as well. He's a contractor to the town. So we're basically leveraging across these two projects to get our tree care needs done in the town. So we've already done the Visitor Center, so that has been completed. And then we'll be back in early 2026 to do another week's worth of work. We've also completed a tree inventory. This is basically an asset management system that, for the town. And the town is able to have access to this database of all of the trees in the town that we have on our, in our parks. So to me, this will make it easy for Jesus and his staff to keep track of all the trees. So we know for every single tree when it was last pruned, what kind of health it's in, so when it was planted, all of that. So that's a really useful asset management system for managing the community forest going forward. To date, we have planted, and we've replaced trees in Johnny Banks Park. And we've planted new trees in Big Ditch Park. We will be planting here in a couple weeks, new trees in Noble Park and Skate Park with Jesus and his staff. We have been looking at green stormwater infrastructure possibilities. We've looked at more opportunities at the rec center, and we'll be continuing that work here. And then I wanna hand it over to Eric and Mariel just to talk a little bit about some of the training things that we have.
Thanks, Allison.
Sure.
Thank you, everybody. I get excited about trees, so I appreciate that. Yeah, at Western, we're really looking at all sides of tree care. And oftentimes, the workforce side of it is lacking. I appreciated your comment, counselor, about a new bit of paint. Tree care, for me, feels the same way. When I see folks in their community working on trees and doing it well, it does revitalize places. But we need to formalize that. And so Western is working on a certificate program to train folks to be an arborist. And for me, that's been wonderful, to not only know that you can work outside and work with trees and make a career, but also something new and something needed that can help the community out. And so for those things, yeah, we're excited. And it'll be in 2026, the fall semester. We're looking to kick off this program. So we just wanted to highlight that here for the town, and we appreciate everyone's support on this project across everywhere. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Eric. So yeah, Eric has been providing a lot of excellent training to all of our maintenance staff in all six communities. So he's a wonderful resource. We sent, I think Jesus went to the Think Trees Conference in February. We're gearing up for the conference again in 2026. So we'll continue that training and building capacity in town staff for tree care and basically management of the town's community forest. So that's where we're at. We're really excited. Thank you for being wonderful partners. And I don't know if there are any questions. If anybody has any questions, we can answer them.
Counselor member have a question. Counselor, yes. Did you say that you make recommendations for removals of dead trees? Or did I misunderstand?
Yes, we do, yep. So our inventory, we have inventory dead trees that need to be removed. We've done some of that already at the Visitor Center. So we removed them. We had Joey from Southwest Tree Solutions, his staff, they did, they got a stump grinder and ground down the stumps so that now we can replace those trees. So we'll continue to do that throughout the parks and other areas that are in our inventory. So like Sixth Street, the Sixth Street School on the north side, for instance, there are a lot of dead trees there in that buffer strip between the playground and the street. We'll be removing all those dead trees, grinding down the stumps, and hopefully replacing those trees at some point. That, just to give you an example. I mean, that one came up in public comment where people were like, yes, get rid of those really sad-looking dead trees.
Have you been notified about the large tree in the La Plata Middle School parking lot? I believe it's a pine tree. It looks like it's dead. It looks like it's probably 80 feet tall. And I'm always cautious of where I park in fear that a limb might fall or break. Fall or whatever. It's been dead for quite a number of years.
Yeah, I, we, I believe we have that tree in our inventory, and it's on the list. So we will be getting to that. We've got a week's worth of Joey's time and his crew's time every year for four years. So we're trying to get as much of this work done as possible. And on the school property, we'll be collaborating with Silver Consultated Schools, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any councilor friends?
I'll echo the concerns about the pine trees, both at my personal home and then also the huge pine tree that we had over in front of Jose Barrios. We were watching that one die 10 feet a month. And removal was very scary for the community to see, but it was also a major safety concern. It's wonderful that we have a plan in place for replacement and that we've got a good inventorying system. I just have three, hopefully, quick questions on it. And for green stormwater infrastructure, I'm familiar with the curb cut program and what we see with the medians over on 180, just making sure that we don't have all of the dirt and gravel and water build up before it starts entering into our arroyos. I also am aware of the green stormwater infrastructure we have in the parking lot over at the Montessori School. Are there any other site locations, just in case any of the counselors get a chance to see what this is going to look like for how we can do better? I'd say by our parking, as well as our larger open spaces, you could recommend?
Yeah, good, good point, Nick. I think for our project, it's really the overlap, right, between green stormwater or mitigating stormwater flow that might be causing flooding and overlap that where we want water because we have new trees. So we want that stormwater flow up the street. We wanna direct that into our new tree planting. So the curb cuts that are going on, that stream dynamics is working on, those are perfect examples. We have talked to Jackie and Jesus about maybe doing that at the rec, at the new rec center with some more trees at the rec center. There could be more trees there. We've got the possibility of doing that because we have irrigation lines. We also, there already is some green stormwater infrastructure over there. There could be maybe some more. So that kind of thing, the curb cuts, is kind of the major thing. We've done a big project for folks who have been over to Santa Clara on Fort Bayard Street. That's the buffer strips there, all along Fort Bayard Street that now have curb cuts into basins and planting. So that's, that's a really good example. So that's, we're gonna, we haven't completed the full assessment of green stormwater infrastructure potential in Silver City, but we're, so we're still engaged in that process, but yeah.
And then for developing legacy support and making sure then that we've got succession plans. I know other municipalities explore having arborists on staff through the Parks Department. They start to figure a government position is going to be appropriate. We don't need to make a judgment call on that right now, but it seems like we wanna start leaning our way towards that.
Absolutely. I mean, I think we, that's something that we've talked about, and whether or not it's like kind of a shared position between Silver City and the mining district, some sort of, something, a person or a contract or whatever. But yes, needs for an arborist over the long term, I think, is a big, is a big thing. And one thing I didn't mention as part of this project is, once the plans are over, our staff and Integrated Biological Solutions, their work really shifts to building capacity, and they can start writing grants. So that's something that we'll start doing. So if it's like identifying potential programs for a position or irrigation systems, actually, we just wrote a big grant for irrigation systems for Santa Clara, Hurley, Deming, and Lordsburg. That's actually a big issue because a lot of communities don't, are, a lot of their irrigation systems are in disrepair. And so we can't really plant trees unless we have a good irrigation system. So that's a big, that's a big investment, so. So yes, an arborist, I think, is a good, a good call. And you'll see that in the plan. There is a recommendation for that.
One last one, one last one. Sure. And then I haven't had a chance to review this for what, if any, plans we've got for invasive species and whether, I don't even know if that's the appropriate term, but just when I'm thinking of Siberian elms, what we have with the Russian olives, what we've got with the trees of heaven. Just kind of wondering then, over the next five years that we're looking at this USDA program, are we starting to think about what, any kind of removal process or what the efforts towards better maintenance of our riparian areas could look like with their potential removal?
Yeah, so we recommend really a plan, a maintenance plan, for coming up for, with a maintenance or management plan for, say, Big Ditch Park and also our riparian areas. So we haven't, and invasives as well, we mentioned it as an issue that needs to be addressed. But we haven't gotten down to the, you know, nitty-gritty. And so that would be something, again, like we could follow up with writing, you know, writing a grant to get resources to do, to develop that plan essentially for the, for the long term.
Any other questions or comments? Allison Civic is Director of the Healer Resources Information Project, and she just finished one big project in San Vicente Creek. And now you're off on another project. You never take a break, so thank you very much.
Hey, there are lots of trees here, right? So we got, got a lot going on. Well, thank you very much. And our, call me or, you know, if anybody has any questions, and we'd love to get your comments and input on the plan. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is reports by the town manager, Mr. Brown.
I don't have any reports, ma'am.
No reports. Next is public hearings, and we have none. Next is unfinished business, and we have none. Next is, under new business, is item 11A, which is the approval/disapproval of monthly support to the Spin Homeless Shelter. Mr. Brown?
This is a request from Spin to, they're requesting $2,200 a month to supplement their, the homeless shelter portion of their operation. And I will leave it at Christine.
Hi again. Thank you all for having us here to hear our plea again tonight. Thought I would just come in and follow up on that request and give you guys some numbers for the last quarter. In the last quarter, so the last three months, we have served 3,900 bed nights, 3,000 meals, and had over 2,000 shower encounters. So those are our numbers for the last three months. I did submit an updated profit and loss statement and a budget that reflects how we would utilize your support and where the cuts would be made without it. So I'm open for questions or...
Counselor, come on.
Okay, so reading this letter, it says 22,000 per month to help sustain and enhance the operational capacity of our shelter. And then it says this monthly support will be allocated towards covering essential operational expenses, including rent, utilities, and monthly cost of security cameras. So then I look at this budget, and I have a couple of questions. On the second page where it says SOS Shelter Budget, if supported, the $2,200 is all going to salaries, and magically, there's no need for a security camera cost. So I'd like that explained. And then, I'm not done. And then the other question I have is, I'm looking at your monthly income, and what I don't see on here is Medicare and Medicaid billing and what you're taking in from that. And I feel like that is probably a larger number than, you know, it's indicated by nothing on here. So I'd like to see a budget that's got everything that you're bringing in in a month.
Sure. As far as the budget goes, so the second one is just where we would, where we would cut. We would cut it from salaries. we would cut. We would cut it from salaries if we're not, we're not going to cut it from our rent, obviously. We're not going to cut that out. We're going to cut the budget. If we have to cut it, it'll be through salaries. In my, in the second thing that you're talking about is that we don't get Medicaid or Medicare funding, billing for what, for housing people at the shelter. We get Medicaid and Medicare billing for therapy, for case management services, and those are things that are separate from housing people at the shelter. Also, not included in the budget for the shelter is the salaries for those case managers or any other of those billable services through Medicaid. Also, the salaries are, would be reflected, and our Medicaid billing would be reflected in the profit and loss statement that I gave you.
Councilor Prince?
Just reviewing what we're looking at here for SOS Shelter Budget, if supported, here on the second page, I see supply security cameras from Comcast over here for $350. Utilities are $1,200 a month. Food, $300. And $201, I just want to double-check a quick second on the $300 and $201, those different line items with it there, with the differences in costs. And then, yes, the salary is $40,000. How many employees do you guys have these days?
How many do we have at the shelter? Just, just the front desk staff and the support. Thirteen? Thirteen, just for like kitchen, laundry, 24-hour staff. That's how many employees we have, just talking about the shelter and not including any case managers or therapeutic people in that. And I forgot what the first part of your question was.
Just for, just what I'm taking a look at for the SOS Shelter Budget, if supported, here under monthly expenses. I just see, yes, supply security cameras, 350. I just see two items here for food, and I just wanted to make sure I understood that $300 and the $201 that we have there.
I don't have it in front of me, and if I put food in there twice, I'm really sorry.
Let me do it fast on it, but thank you. Hold up a second.
Last time you came requesting some funding, I believe you said you had 32 employees?
Company-wide, we probably have closer to 40.
How many employees do you have here locally? And my question is, why would you have so many employees? It seemed like that's quite a bit of, for your operations of your...
So the total number of employees spans three counties, and a huge number of them are here in Grant County, because we offer more services here in Grant County than we do anywhere else. The shelter specifically, we staff 24 hours a day with more than one person. And a lot of our other staff are providers, are therapeutic providers.
Are any of your homeless people that you have there, are they employees of Spin?
So we, we don't full-time employ people who are staying at the shelter. We do utilize and pull from employee pools, like from our recovery homes on occasion. And we have a lot of time in with a lot of our clients who have some sustained recovery, that they've put in their time and become providers of. Also, we have that, too.
Councilor Kono, then Councilor Snyder.
Okay, I'm going back to the salaries. So the first page says Shelter Budget is Not Supported. So is that $37,800, what you're paying employees at this point for a month? And then it's going to raise to $40,000? Or are you paying people $40,000 now, and they're going to get a pay cut if we don't give them the money?
We'll probably cut ours, is what'll happen.
Councilor Snyder?
I just want to say, we appreciate what you do down there. And I think a lot of people don't realize the number of services that Spin provides. And when they're looking at the salaries and stuff, I think you're just talking about the SOS Shelter. Is that correct?
The budget that I submitted to, I, we're just talking about the shelter.
Thank you. Councilor Prince?
Totally able to resolve what was with that budget. It just that lines were juggled around. It looks like supplies is just 201. Add up all the numbers. Everything checks out just fine. And, you know, I think answering towards Councilor Bencomo's comments and concerns about the number of employees, SOS Shelter is a 24/7, 365 shelter, I believe. And staffing at least two, if not three, people per eight-hour shift over those seven days can really add up.
Plus cook, plus laundry support, plus...
Right, just supervising versus also the rest of it.
Twenty-four seven.
That's an incredible amount, and that's an incredible team that you've built at this point to be able to help with one of the most pressing and overheard concerns we've had in this community for years. So I just want to commend you, and thank you so much for doing so.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Kono?
So this doesn't have to do with the budget, but I do have a question. You know, every time you come, I ask the same question. Has anything changed in the neighborhood? Have the neighbors been reached out to? Has there been any meetings? Has there been any improvement in neighborhood relations?
Well, I can tell you what I have done recently. That is super exciting. I went and visited the West, Gateway West Shelter in Albuquerque, and I know we're not like in that ballpark at all. They're housing 600 people a night there. It blew my mind. So I had two questions. One, what do you use on the floor, right? Because, like, we need something that's going to hold up. And my second question was, how do you, what about security? Like, how do you, how do you work security? And so they showed me some things that we're going to implement at the shelter. It's going to be costly. But I've been talking to Alex already for like a couple of years now about how do we fence it off in a way that means, would be meaningful. And I learned that at the, how to do that in a way that we don't have people hanging, aren't, won't be allowed to congregate in the front. There'll be an fenced area off the back there. And so we're also going to build an intake area at the front, so that when people go in, they won't be allowed to come and go out the front there. They'll be allowed to come and go out the back in the gated area, but we'll have, we're hoping that that eliminates a lot of the traffic in the neighborhood.
Councilor Kono?
So you're telling me you still haven't reached out to the neighborhood? We still haven't heard anything about you having any community relations, where you've discussed things with the neighbors who have been suffering for the last five years. There still hasn't been any movement there?
We do talk to the neighbors quite often.
Which neighbors, I mean, like, what have you done? Have you had a meeting? Have you sent them a letter? That's the kind of thing I'm wondering.
Councilor Kono, let her finish answering.
I haven't had any formal meetings with the community now.
Any other councilor friends?
If I memory serves me correctly, last September in 2023 was when we were looking at funding. And I know we weren't able to get a second at that meeting while you were working towards making sure that you could get the funding that you needed to complete the audits. I just wanted to say I appreciated receiving the audits, both for what we saw in 2023 and 2024. You've been able to persevere despite very little support and despite numerous constituents coming up concerned about the homeless issues that we've got in our community. Again, I just want to commend you on that one for pulling through even when it was not made easy on that one. $2,200 a month right now falls very below, below our threshold, which we usually authorize from the town. I just want to check in a quick moment with town management on this. For the 2,200 monthly support on that one, would we be entering into a contract? What's going to be the formal arrangement on that?
If approved, we would enter into a contract.
Thank you.
Anything else? Councilor Snyder?
And how long would that contract be for?
Usually 12, 12 months, because that's a fiscal year.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion. Now, the way I want this motion to read is to be a positive motion. And if you agree to funding what's requested, your vote should be yea. If you're not agreeing to funding the request, your vote should be nay. Can I have a motion, Councilor Prince?
I move to approve monthly support to Spin Homeless Shelter.
We have a motion. There's a second. Councilor Snyder?
I second the motion. Stay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Does everyone understand? Roll call, please, Mr. Sedia.
Councilor Beal, nay.
Councilor Prince?
Aye.
Councilor Snyder?
Aye.
Councilor Kono?
Nate.
I vote nay. Next, yeah, I have a request for a 10-minute recess. We'll look at the time. At 7 o'clock, we're going to start 10 after 7:00. So please be back by then.